All right. I'll call a meeting to order Holiday Island Planning Commission. Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting for nine twenty-one twenty-one. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynn, you want to do the roll call?
Dumas, here. Elwood?
Here.
Graves?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Pittman?
Here.
And Keys?
Here.
All present.
All right, I'll declare a forum. Any comments on the agenda? Ken made a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We have minutes from September fourteenth meeting to approve. Any questions or comments on the minutes as distributed? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minute. Pat made a motion to approve the minute. Do I have a second?
Come on, second.
Jerry seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. No reports at this time, no old business, so we can go on to new business considering Resolution R-21-009, establishing the Holiday Island Planning Area map.
I move that we put Resolution R-21-009 on the floor for discussion.
I'll second.
Okay. Lynn made a motion to consider the resolution. And Linda seconded it. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Lynn, you want to handle reading it?
Resolution HICPC-R21-9. Resolution establishing the Holiday Island Planning Area map. Whereas the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has investigated the proximity of the town of Beaver and the city of Eureka Springs, and determined that a line equidistant between their municipal boundaries and Holiday Island municipal boundaries must be established for territorial jurisdiction. And whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-413, the HICPC has determined that it shall define its territorial jurisdiction within the maximum one mile limit. And whereas said area is visually depicted on the attached map entitled City of Holiday Island Planning Area Map 2021-10, which is adopted here with and made a part of, made a part hereof. And whereas, HICPC recommends the adoption of the attached ordinance by the City Council of Holiday Island. And whereas pursuant to the requirement of ACA 1456-412, the HICPC designates the following described area as its planning area. Located in all, located all in Carroll County, Arkansas, with territory situated in Sections nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-four, and thirty-five. Township twenty-one north, range twenty-six west. And more particularly described as follows. Commonly described as beginning at the most westerly corner of Holiday Island city limits adjoining the White River Table Rock Lake. Then southeast to a point located on east Section 20 line at approximately two thousand five hundred and thirty-one feet south of the northeast corner of Section 20. Then, then south along the section line to a point located on west Section 28 line at approximately one thousand six hundred and sixty-four feet south of northwest corner of Section 28. Then southeasterly to the northwest southwest corner of Section 35. Then east to the northeast southeast corner of Section 35. Then north along the east section line of Sections 35 and 26 to a point where Highway 23 east side right-of-way intersects the east Section 26 line. Then along Highway twenty-one, twenty-three north, along the east side right-of-way of Highway 23 north to the Missouri state line. Then west on the Missouri state line to a point on the northwest city limits of Holiday Island. Then continuing along the city limits of Holiday Island to the point of the beginning. Passed and approved on this date. Second page is a suggested ordinance. It's not numbered because it's a suggestion from the planning commission. It says an ordinance established in the city of Holiday Island Planning Area. Whereas Arkansas's municipal planning statute ACA 1456-401 and following require that planning commissions prepare a planning area map and description, designate the area within the city's territorial jurisdiction for which they may, will make studies and prepare plans and recommended ordinances and regulations. And whereas after due consideration, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has approved by Resolution HICPC-21-9, a planning area map and description. And whereas it is the desire of the City Council that said planning area be formally approved by ordinance thus established in the city of Holiday Island Planning Area map. Now therefore being ordained by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section one, that the map entitled City of Holiday Island Planning Area Map-2021-10, which is attached hereto and made part hereof in the description thereof, which follows, both of which have been approved by the HICPC, be and are hereby approved and adopted. And then the same location I read earlier and the same common description are listed. Section two, that a duly certified copy of this ordinance shall be forwarded to the mayor of the town of Beaver and the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs and should be filed of record in the Carroll County Recorder's Office. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this blank day of blank 2021. And then the third page is the attachment of an image of the planning area map.
Okay. I guess I can make just one brief comment. And that's that this was worked out between Lynn and the GIS office. Was a considerable work put into this. And it's obviously within the legal boundaries of what we're entitled to claim as our planning area. So, is there any discussion on the resolution?
I assume that when you, that GIS put together those number of feet from the section corners and stuff like that?
Sure. I can talk about that briefly.
I'm guessing you didn't go out there and measure it yourself.
No, I didn't. What I, what I did do though is I took an enlarged copy of the map and did my own measurements from the map directly. And there's a certain amount of printer error built in and there's a certain amount of judgment you make on where you place your calipers. I measured with a micrometer to measure the distance between. And the numbers I came up were with, one of them was off about twenty feet from the number that she had from her mapping system, the other was off one foot. So I did this just to validate that she was in the right spot when she did the measurements and we, we agreed I used her numbers in the ordinance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And for the record, she was really impressed with Lynn's.
I bet.
Technical ability. All right, any other questions on the resolution?
Make a motion to approve the Resolution HICPC-R21-009.
Ken made a motion to approve the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry made, Jerry seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Does this take, this will take a roll call?
It takes a roll call, yes sir.
Dumas, aye. Elwood?
Aye.
Graves?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Pittman?
Aye.
And Keys?
Yes. I had to be different. All right. The resolution passes and we'll consider the ordinance and the upcoming, City Council meeting, that's why I was wanting to help the ordinance. It's just a matter of record. We'll, we'll consider the ordinance in the next meeting today. Okay. Ken thanks Lynn enough for all the work that he put into this. It was more than just a couple hours. It was many, many, many hours of work. And by having this document, we're probably, we might be the only city in Carroll County that actually has a planning area map.
Well, Beaver thinks they do. And the planner at Eureka says, I'm not aware of one.
Yeah.
I didn't, I asked.
I would bet that very well that one.
I have a question, Lynn.
Sure.
What's the next step now then before we can actually get to planning commission? Or building permits and all of that?
We need to do a street map. A facilities plan.
So, and the zoning map.
And the zoning map.
The zoning map was probably the most important one. Because without that, we have nothing to refer to when considering building permit. If somebody wants to build, you know, hog farm in, you know, unit four, and we have no zoning ordinances, we would have no basis for approving or rejecting the request, so.
I've done a study of the available covenants and I documented how things are zoned and the exceptions in each covenant for what lots were changed.
What is a facility map?
It shows what properties the city owns. So we won't have any, but the ones we know will probably be the ones that belong to ISID.
But will they be, they, they aren't real city properties?
No, they aren't. The RP will have to say they're ISID properties.
Okay.
It, it's a, it's a planning map, it doesn't have to reflect only stuff that the city owns.
Right, you would have parks and schools.
More, more or less public type facilities.
They wouldn't exempt them zone.
No. It's just that they want, the state wants us to have a facilities plan, a facilities map.
It's intended for long-range planning. And I think we've talked about this before. Most cities have, you know, lots of flat acreage available to them. But they set aside for industrial parks and regular parks and, and all kinds of things. You know, we're very limited on what we can do, at least at this time, but we still want to have the map.
I can add to the conversation about map creation. You know, I started off with the DOT and the map that they sent me in two different forms, I couldn't open with any free drafting software that's available. It's probably because the version is newer and has features in it that lock out the old stuff. So I resorted to calling the GIS. Today, when I went down to the printer, because I got copies of the maps that we have to use for filing with the county recorder, just spoke with her briefly about what software she would have available. And their rate is sixty dollars an hour to work on anything that we might take from them, so it'll be part of our expense if we have to hire someone to do a mapping of our master street plan, for instance, to change highlights and what have you. So far, I have not been successful with the software I have on my twelve-year-old laptop to mark up PDF drawings. So, it's just something in the future we may have to have.
Yeah.
We could probably do it with crayons and chalk and take photographs of it, that'd probably be enough. We'd probably want electronic document.
I mean, shouldn't the planning commission have its own computer?
I think so, but it's something for us to decide. I've done my investigation, I'm about ready to pull the trigger on updating this one to something more modern, something quicker. This Word document that I have, that I gave you folks when we started, it's now fifty pages. It's set to auto-save every five minutes, so I have to wait forty seconds for it to save that document every time it does it on this laptop. I'm tired of waiting.
Well, my answer to your question is yes, eventually the planning commission, or at least the building inspector is going to have to have a computer, a building inspector, hopefully slash code enforcement officer. Because they have to keep records of all permits issued and citations issued, all that kind of stuff. So, if we thought that we were going to be doing mapping on a frequent and regular basis, it would probably behoove us to buy the software to do that. But I believe that once these maps are complete and on file, there won't be that much need to update them on a regular basis.
And moving forward, we're going to have a lot of the ordinances that are going to come from the planning commission, so my concern is to get them safely from my machine onto the backup device that we have so that they're in the right place. Right now, we're using a cloud-based solution to hold them in.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, money is tight at this point, but I mean, to have a twelve-year-old computer, his personal computer. I think, yeah, I have a new one.
Well, the problem is, you still can't ensure that he's not got a virus on his computer.
Right.
Would probably, I don't know, maybe we need, you know, a computer for the building inspector and so they won't put, they won't sell it. So what I heard, that he, that, that this twelve-year-old computer, that may be one issue to both of us.
Also, bear in mind, just speaking to this point about getting a computer. And I don't mean this offensively at all, but I mean, by chance, Lynn might not be on the planning commission forever. And the planning commission, as it goes into the future, probably should have its own computer for any documents or anything that they happen to generate.
Well, I mean that we're going to wart it to him in appreciation of his hard work.
Is that what you're rolling out for?
No, sir.
Anyway, some of the concerns.
All right, well.
And it doesn't have to be decided today.
No.
We're moving ahead. Okay, any other, anything else for planning commission for today?
We have public comments?
Public comments?
Public comments from Zoom participant?
Oh, anybody on Zoom want to make a public comment? Don't see anybody.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
What, down to speed?
Oh, we start the next meeting?
Regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting, it's gonna be, I don't have my calendar, so somebody will have a calendar.
It, it's the third Tuesday, is that, or second Tuesday? Second Tuesday, sorry. Hold on, let me pull up October. Second Tuesday would be the twelfth. October twelfth. Three PM.
Three, aye. We need another special meeting before that, we'll call it. No workshops coming up. All right. Now I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn as Holiday Island Planning Commission and reconvene as the Holiday Island City Council. I think we put that in one motion, though. You want to go again?
Ken. At what time is it?
Well, if we were just to adjourn, then we would just pause the Zoom and open it up again when we start the next one. Same, same thing.
About force.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to restart.
We're not gonna, we're not, we're not.
I need to stop and start my recording as well.
Yeah, we're not re-stopping Zoom, though. We're not stopping Zoom.
Let's officially end this one, take a five-minute break and then come back and start the City Council meeting. I wouldn't want to start it early because people might not log in for.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Right. Jerry made a motion to adjourn. Lynn seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Or adjourned?
The only people on Zoom are Barb Coon and BJ Dennis, so.
You must have bothered Dale.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. City Council meeting for nine twenty-one twenty-one. We did the pledge of allegiance a half hour ago, so I think we'll dispense with that this time. Roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Dumas?
Here.
Councilmember Elwood?
Here.
Councilmember Graves?
Here.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Pittman?
Here.
All present. Mr. Mayor?
I'll declare a forum. Any questions on the agenda? Very lengthy for today.
We might take the license to move broadband, GPS.
Okay, is Rodney coming?
He's coming, he's lost.
He's lost? Been here before.
I know, but he was using his, I don't know where he was coming from, but sitting about the, somewhere.
All right. We'll, we'll leave it where it is on the agenda, but if we have to, we'll skip over it. Rodney Downs is coming to talk to us about another grant opportunity relative to broadband and this just came up today, so. I just pulled that out. So, all right, maybe by the time we get to it, he'll be here.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Lynn made the motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Pat seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. We have minutes from the August seventeenth regular meeting and August twenty-four special meeting. Any questions on the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from eight seventeen and eight twenty-four.
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes from eight seventeen and eight twenty-four, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Lynn seconded it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, ceremonies, recognitions, proclamations, and in memoriam. I think, I've got to mention in memoriam, Voice Williams passed away. Voice obviously didn't have anything to do with the city, but in the history of Holiday Island, Voice Williams did a lot. He was on the Board of Commissioners. He was, I think, temporary acting or whatever, district manager for a while. He was very active in community affairs, especially Rotary. He and his wife, Phyllis, just like a week ago, moved over to Bentonville or Rogers, somewhere over there, and he passed away. Who missed Voice? He was a, he was a nice guy. All right. Proclamations, I do have a proclamation here. City of Holiday Island proclamation. Whereas since November twenty-seventeen, Carroll County Youth Literacy Rotary Foundation has been registering children from birth to five years old to receive free appropriate developmental books mailed monthly to their homes through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And whereas the, I want to abbreviate this, the foundation has touched over fourteen hundred children in Carroll County, shipping over thirty thousand books. And whereas less than forty percent of our children are passing grade three level reading tests, literacy incurs a massive economic toll on our community and keeps the individual from reaching full potential. And whereas, this is a great time to get into good habits to help children develop love for books which builds bonds, supports early writing and reading skills, enhances vocabulary, and prepares children for school success. And whereas, this is a time to encourage the preschool children to hold a good book and explore new worlds. And whereas, this is the time which celebrates families sharing the joy of reading and learning together. And whereas, it's never too early to start reading where you're rolling, and it's never too late to learn more. And whereas, the key to developing young learners into engaged, active, and innovative thinkers is instilling in them a love of reading at an early age. And whereas, reading is the gateway to countless skills and possibilities that sets children on a path to a lifetime of discovery, broadened perspective, and powers to dream. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Dan Keyes, Mayor of the City of Holiday Island, to hereby proclaim the month of November as Family Literacy Month in the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Proclaimed on this date. So I'm going to sign this proclamation.
Hang on, I'll take a picture of you signing.
Of me signing, yeah.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. All right. Okay, moving on then. Any other ceremonial recognitions or in memoriam? Thought we'll move on to standing committees and commissions. Broadband, broadband, oh, first of all, before we get into that, let me update everybody on our county property tax for roads that we're supposed to be getting our share of. Wes and I thought that we had this all under control. Wes and I and our city attorney thought that we had this all taken care of. We went through all of the individuals at the county and talked to them. I guess we never directly talked to the county judge, but it ended up basically being a communication between our attorney, Justin Eichmann, and Tony Rogers, attorney, prosecuting attorney for the county. And basically, what it comes down to is, is that no one at the county wanted, feels like it's their job or that they have the authority to make a decision on this. And they, I believe, were waiting for a legal opinion from Tony. We believe that after Justin Eichmann talked to Tony and Tony talked to the Arkansas Association of Counties Attorney and municipal attorneys, that Tony agreed that we were entitled to the money. And we believe that he talked to Judge Barrow of it. However, when Wes followed up in the last couple of days, find out where the money was, why we weren't getting paid yet. The treasurer, correct me if I'm wrong, Wes, but basically the treasurer said she hadn't been instructed to dispense the money yet. Said it was the, that the collector had to tell her to do it. The collector said she has nothing to do with it. Maybe the city clerk is the one that decided. And so he called the city clerk and she said she's got nothing to do with it. It's got to be, it must be a legal opinion. So it got down to, back to Tony Rogers again. So we've gone full circle twice on this.
Yeah.
I talked to Justin. Tony said he was going to call Justin. Tony told Wes that he sort of remembered all of this and he sort of remembered an attorney general's opinion, but that was all. He just had this, a sort of memory of this. So I called Justin and Justin agreed with us that he thought we had this all resolved. He was going to call Tony also, but Tony didn't call him, and discuss it one more time. I suggested that, you know, that maybe when we went through this the first time, we should have followed up with a letter to Judge Barrow and to Tony Rogers stating what we think we agreed on and requesting a response from them in writing as to what they're going to do. In hindsight, we should have done that. I think all we've really lost is time. Uh, I think all we've really lost is time, uh, but because Justin is going to, was going to write the letter today, get it to the county, uh, tomorrow by fax if possible, and, um, and he was going to explain the whole thing again and, um, indicate that even though it's late in the year, the City of Holiday Island still expects to receive the full amount that we were due for the entire year, and he will request a, a response in writing from the county. So maybe we'll put an end to this, uh, uh, obviously there's no incentive on the part of the people at the county to make this happen, so.
So Justin is putting this request in writing now?
He is going to, yes, he is going to put in writing what we believe the understanding is and get them to respond in writing as to what they believe the understanding is.
Let treasurer send an email back to Wes, he reported to us, she said, agreed to it.
Yeah.
He said that in essence, agreed she was going to make disbursement for August collections in September, and we would get all the money we had coming to her. How much in the hell did that come from?
I don't know, but Justin is on top of it, and, yeah, I'll keep everybody posted on that. Okay, uh, now we can move on to broadband grant applications. Jerry?
Uh, talked to Rodney this morning, uh, and he got a day on the grant and agreed to come in and tell us about the development.
Well, it's good to see everybody again.
Can you go over to the podium?
Sure.
It will, that's when he gets in front of the podium, yeah.
There's a little microphone there.
But he'll, he'll be talking into this, like, it'll be fine.
We're good?
Yep.
All right, it is good to see everybody again, appreciate the phone calls, Jerry, good to talk with you. There are things just going, it's like a, it's like a beehive of activity in, in the, in the state level for broadband right now. It's like, it's just, everybody's just trying to do everything, and I don't know if anybody knows what's going on. But we're still continuing with our original grant application process. However, we've added a second application as well, one that encompasses the entire northern part of Carroll County. I learned that the, or two things recently. One was, we could go ahead and apply for the deployment grant, which would be the larger grant that would enable us to do the engineering, the feasibility studies, buy the equipment and install it with everything, uh, without having to go through the smaller grant that we originally discussed. So we, uh, the grant writer is working on both attachments, the smaller one, the engineering grant, as well as going ahead with the deployment grant. I found out this morning in a meeting at ten thirty I was in with the, actually with the county judge in Benton County, that the state is allocating four million dollars to hire a consultant, a broadband consultant. So, if they may not be funding the smaller grants, and, and, and this is just my interpretation, they may not fund the smaller grants because those smaller grants were for us consultants to work directly with municipalities and government entities. So we're still waiting on the funding for the one, the grant that we sent in for variable on July twenty-seventh. That one has been funded, same type of thing we're working on for you guys. To make a long story short, there's a lot of activity going on, it's just like nobody knows, the right hand don't know what the left hand's doing, and it's hard for me to get any information about anything, but we're plowing through and doing everything we can do to try to get funding to put fiber optics to the home everywhere that is desired in Carroll County.
Does this larger grant program have a name and instructions and everything else?
Yes, sir, it is, it's called the Arkansas World Connect Program, ARC, A R C. We actually were granted an award from the same program earlier this year for a project, a wireless project we did over near Oak Road, Arkansas.
Okay.
Here in Carroll County, so.
Listen.
Yes, sir.
All that money stemming out of the, uh, what did you call it, the Chris Street Plan? Was it with the rest of the planning actors, the cares actors? Yeah.
It's coming from the cares.
Millions of dollars down to the state.
It's coming from the cares. And now there's infrastructure money, I mean, it's like, they're throwing all this money at states, and the state doesn't know what to do with it. The maps are all wrong because the FCC's method of collecting data from internet service providers like us is, is too broad. It doesn't, it is, it, for example, in this area, well, outside Holiday Island and inside Holiday Island, there's a wireless internet company located in Nixon, Missouri, that shows they're providing thirty megabits per second download internet in this entire area. I have a letter, the owner of that company is a friend of mine, he wrote a letter saying, "We don't provide that speed. We can't provide that speed." So that's how messed up their maps are, but when it comes to funding, that's the map they go by, because if you're already covered, they won't give you the money. So the grant writer is working with us, uh, we're working with politicians, trying to filter through all this mess, and just seeing if somebody's anxious, somebody will help us, uh, get these grants delivered, awarded, and so we can get to work.
I sat in on a municipal league web, webinar a couple of weeks ago, and they were talking about infrastructure money uh, that is, could be coming after the first of the year, and they also talked about the issue of these bogus maps like we're dealing with here, Cox say they provide, you know, eighty-nine percent covered or whatever it is, and, uh, and they gave some suggestions, because I can't remember off the top of my head, but, uh, how to combat that and improve those wrong, so.
And I think from what I understand, that's going to be the first challenge for this new consultant group, is to identify errors and take measures to correct those errors in the maps. So I don't know if that's going to grind the grant process to a halt while they're doing all this. I have, I, I just have no idea what, what they're, what they're doing. So we're just moving ahead as if, we, as if somebody does know. And hopefully the land of the right hands can get some action to it. But honestly, talking to a representative, Arlen, for example, and others, it never hurts to get the politicians who were in Little Rock involved, letting them know when something's on the way. And I can certainly let you guys know when the grants are submitted, so that they can hopefully make sure it gets on the right best of consideration.
You would be submitting this second grant request, um, for Holiday, for Holiday Island?
The second grant, the second grant request is actually, uh, it's a very broad grant. It covers the entire part of northern Carroll County. So we will ask for support letters from you, Mayor, from Holiday Island, uh, and from businesses, residents, everybody we can get. But it's actually a partnership with the county. So Judge Barr has already signed off on this thing, and we're, we're partnered with it exactly the way we did the, the, uh, ARC grant that we were awarded in February for a smaller project. So we're following the same template, we know what worked then, we're doing exactly the same things now, and again, just, we just have to hope that it's the right timing and it's the right desk it lands on. Now, the good thing is, they, this particular grant, because it's, this is a county thing, it's not centrally located in the city, it puts, it puts us putting fiber west and east of the city, where we can just kind of enclose it at the right time. Uh, but it would, it would enable us to, to, to deliver fiber to you guys, even though the grant is specific, not specific, designed to certain, in this non-covered areas outside of Holiday Island, because like Jerry said a while ago, the map says Cox has a hundred percent of Holiday Island taken care of, but we know that not to be true. But we can take some of this and move it into the areas that are covered. Yes, sir.
Are you aware of a, a social media app called Nextdoor? Have you seen that?
No.
There's a group, uh, a Nextdoor group called Holiday Island, and if you found that and could join that, it'd be an excellent place for you to place your requirement for needs or support for your effort, and I would venture there'd be a lot of feedback from that. We also have a couple of Facebook pages that are popular here, Holiday Island Common, Arkansas, and Holiday Island Neighbors. So those might be sources for you to post a notice of what you need, and people could give you what you need to fill your book.
That would be fantastic, huh? And, and Nextdoor is an app? Okay.
If you, if you can tell me what we need to ask, I'll be posting.
That would be fantastic, uh, but I mean, I would like to.
I'll ask you, I don't know what's, I don't know most of what you mean by what I'm talking about.
Well, I would like to see what we've said about them, so, um. So I'll, I'll definitely jump on that, in fact, when I get to the truck, when I come up under the truck, I'll download that Nextdoor app for sure.
The, the only, uh, only caveat is, uh, you have to be aware that it's a soapbox for whoever hasn't been in it.
Oh, yeah.
But a lot of people read it, so I think it'd be a place for you to, to get support for what you need.
A lot of people talk about not having internet, not having the availability of it, the speed of it, and, and problems with it. So that's a frequent conversation on all those platforms.
Sure. I always come back to that very thing, that, that eventually we're going to have to have our own data to support what the reality is here, or we're going to get overlooked, and, um, so at, at some point, we may just have to put together a, you know, our own, um.
Survey.
Castles to go door to door and check people's internet speed, ask them if they even have internet, if they've tried to get it, um, what it would cost them to get it if they wanted it, and, and, um, just, you know, good, solid data to refute the maps that are floating out there, because otherwise it's going to be our word against Cox.
Yeah, I think it's a good start what Lynn suggested. I mean, I've got two or three people that said they would write a letter of anecdotal evidence that they, uh, can't get cable or have, uh, spotty coverage. Like, they'll get a ton of responses.
Good.
To Nextdoor and a couple of, uh, Facebook groups.
That's great. Well, as you know, the grant writer was on vacation for a while, she's back, and she is working diligently to get these, these things submitted. So, um, she was on that meeting with me this morning, and has texted me twice since then, so she's, she's actively working on this for us. Um, I hired her, um, we're paying her, so she's, she's working the job like it's serious. Yes, sir, yes, sir. And we just got to hope that the grants come through, so I'm not, you know, I'm not stuck with totally with the bill. But I'm confident enough that I've got my money out there to get it.
Okay. Any other questions for Rodney?
Do you need directions to get back home?
No, my, dude, he's phone handed. I, that thing took me up Summit to, to, uh.
Oh, my God.
You should knock on some doors, that's the area, some of the areas.
Oh, I could tell, I could tell, yeah, I mean, it's like.
J I S doesn't work up there either. Nothing works up there. I, I have heard from a couple of people that Cox pulled up to about, about a thousand deep from their land, and they would not, they would not even extend the cable. They will, for a price, for a big price, yeah. No, it's not all of Holiday Island has cable.
We need to document as much of that as we can, so that it's very challenged, it's very easy, or, you know, the data that's out there.
If we could produce a map of the gap areas, it'd be nice.
We're getting a fiber vision in Holiday Island now.
And it's, it's, it's a, it's a trunk line, um, basically going from Missouri to Benton County.
Yes, that's those, uh, bike poles or anything. I think the markers.
Well, the fiber, uh, a lot of the fiber that's running here is already, is there. I guess they ran through a lot of rock.
Really, fine rock right here.
Um, let's see, I have a question for you, um.
I think it's easier to ask than it is to tell.
Oh, come on, guys. In that original application packet I sent to you guys, there's a link in there for a speed test directly to the state. If there are people out here who don't have twenty-five pound speeds, they need to go to that and click that speed test, take the speed test, tell the state who their provider is, and it'll be documented on the map, and it shows the powers that be in Little Rock, that, hey, there is not, you know, about a gigabit speed here, I'm only getting five meg now, or whatever it might be.
There's your first post, Jerry.
Yeah, and back with that would be one, uh, for what probably, I'll send newsletter to get to everybody.
And I would, I would highly recommend to say, if you don't have at least twenty-five degrees, use this to prove it to the state, so that we can document the need for this, for this grant.
And automatically logs that to the state?
Yes, sir.
That's the name of it, yeah.
If you can't find that link, just text me later and I'll send it back to you, okay? Because it's.
I've got it.
But, uh, getting that out to everybody would certainly alleviate a lot of the questions.
Is, uh, is there a way for us to get a report of how many people have responded to that?
Anybody can look at that map at any given time, and it shows dots where it's been tested, and you can put, you press around the dot and show what test, what the results were.
Excellent.
So I'll make sure that.
That's what we need.
I'll make sure you have that, so, I mean, I mean, it's, it is real time, and it is logged, everybody gets to see exactly what the speed is in that area and who the provider is.
Do we have access to that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, that's what I was saying, if, uh, if Jerry wouldn't mind sharing that, and if you can't find it, let me know.
I've, I've had everything printed out still on my lap, I've had it here, I'm sorry.
Perfect, but, uh, that would be one great way of documenting at the state level exactly the challenges here.
It'd be interesting that, that once we put that word out, and monitor it every two or three days, to see it.
I'm guaranteed, bro. So, maybe that's a little tidbit that I can leave you with, it's a little bit of good information.
Okay, thank you for riding over.
Appreciate it, it's always a pleasure to see you guys, and look forward to talking to you again soon.
Okay, um, anything else, Jerry, or Rodney?
No, I mentioned that, that webinar, uh, I've got a recording of it, if anybody wants to watch it.
All right, uh.
Wes sent in on some of it.
Is there anything, we have a planning commission on the agenda, but.
I can just say the things that we need to work on, I need a, a current plat map, the last one I have is dated January twenty-twelve, so we can work on our master street plan. Uh, we need to work on our current zoning, and I've done some of that homework by creating a spreadsheet, looking at the covenants that are available, and noting how areas are zoned and the exceptions that are in those. The problem is, there are quite a few that I don't have, so I probably need to make a trip to the county offices to see if they have a copy of the county. to see if they have a copy of the county. And then we need to document the land owned by HICID and hopefully that information's readily available so that we can do part of that zoning map, but also part of the facilities plan. So those are the agenda items that I have to work on for the next few weeks.
Okay.
I was gonna ask for volunteers.
You can always ask for volunteers.
Okay.
Are you officially asking for volunteers?
And it's crickets. Oh, yeah.
You could probably get some volunteers, but you'd have to tell them specifically what you're wanting them to volunteer to do.
Okay.
Okay, moving on then, no special committees, old business, second reading of ordinance 2021-007. I guess we don't need a motion to put this on the floor since we're already, you have to have a motion to read it. Go ahead and make a motion to the-
Make a motion that we had the second reading of ordinance on 2021-007.
Ken made a motion for the second reading of ordinance 2021-007. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ordinance number 2021-007, an ordinance establishing wards for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas Arkansas Code annotated ACA 1444, one-on-one states that as soon as practicable after an incorporated town becomes a city of the second class, the city council shall form the city into a number of wards that do what will seem to best serve the interests of the city. And whereas said code also states that it shall be in duty of the council to see that each ward has as nearly an equal population as to each of the other wards as would best serve the interests of taxpayers of the city. And whereas on the 23rd day of March 2021, the secretaries of the state of Arkansas certified Holiday Island to be a city of the second class. And whereas the estimated population of the wards are Ward 1, 721, Ward 2, 740, Ward 3, 796, now being ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. That the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas shall be organized into three wards according to the map and legal description attached to this ordinance. And that upon approval of this ordinance, the attached map and legal description will be filed with the clerk of court of Carroll County, Arkansas. Passed and approved, well, it'll be passed and approved on the, at, at next, at next month's meeting. I don't remember, did we vote on approving the second reading? I don't remember the procedure on that.
I thought that's what Ken made a motion to read it. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading just in case.
Oh, to approve it, okay.
The issue is that one.
I'll move that we approve the second reading.
Second.
Linda made a motion to approve the ordinance on the second reading and Lynn seconded it. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Yes.
Councilmember Elway.
Yes.
Councilmember Graves.
Yes.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the second reading is approved. We'll do the third reading at the next council meeting. All right. Moving on, I put it, put on here a discussion on the sheriff's contract, although I really don't have anything new to add. So I'll just briefly state again where we're at.
Wait a minute.
Are you passing over the ordinance?
Planning area map. The ordinance 2110.
Oh, I, yep, never mind. I skipped, oh, never mind, I won't even explain why I made that mistake. Blame it on my glasses and the poor lighting here. All right.
I move that we put ordinance 2021-10 on the floor for discussion.
Second.
Lynn made the motion to put it on the floor for discussion and Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We shall discuss it.
We shall read it.
Read it.
Ordinance 2021-10, an ordinance establishing the city of Holiday Island planning area map, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas Arkansas's municipal planning statutes ACA 1456-401 and following require that planning commissions prepare a planning area map and description designated the area within the city's territorial jurisdiction for which they will make studies and prepare plans and recommended ordinances and regulations. And whereas, after due consideration, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has approved by resolution HICPC R 21-9, planning area map and description. And whereas it is the desire of the city, the desire of the city council that said planning area be formally approved by ordinance thus established in the city of Holiday Island planning area map, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section 1, that the map entitled City of Holiday Island Planning Area Map 2021-10, which is attached hereto and made part hereof, and the description thereof, which follows, both of which have been approved by the HICPC, be and hereby approved and adopted, located all in Carroll County, Arkansas, with territory situated in sections 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 34, and 35, township 21 North, range 26 West. More particularly described as, commonly described as the beginning at the most westerly corner of Holiday Island city limits adjoining the White River, Maple Rock Lake. Thence southeast to a point located on East Section 20 line at approximately 2,531 feet south of northeast corner of Section 20. Thence south along Section 20 line to a point located on the west Section 28 line at approximately 1,664 feet south of northwest corner of Section 28. Thence southeasterly to the northwest southwest corner of Section 35. Thence east to the northeast southeast corner of Section 35. Thence north along the East Section line of Section 35 and 26 to a point located where Highway 23 east side right of way intersects the East Section 26 line. Thence along Highway 23 North along the east side right of way of Highway 23 North to the Missouri State Line. Thence west, west on the Missouri State Line to a point on the northwest city limits of Holiday Island. Thence continue along the city limits of Holiday Island to the point of the beginning. Section 2, that a duly certified copy of this ordinance shall be forwarded to the mayor of the town of Bieber and the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs. It should be filed of record in the Carroll County Recorder's Office. Section 3 severability, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared severable and if any section phrase or provision shall be declared or held invalid, such an indolidity shall not affect the remainder of the section's phrases or provisions. Section 4, emergency clause, the need to make use of the provisions of ACA 1456-401 and following of the Arkansas Code of 1987 annotated and amended to create a city of Holiday Island planning area map in order to adopt and enforce plans for the coordinated, adjusted, harmonious development of the city of Holiday Island and its environment. And the activities associated with urban planning is immediate and an emergency is hereby declared to exist. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas on this 21st day of September 2021.
Okay, and the map was attached to the ordinance?
Yes, the last page is the, the image of the map.
Right. I'm gonna open up the floor for discussion here. When we're done with the discussion, we will have to have a motion to declare the emergency and then we'll vote on the actual ordinance.
Now we have to suspend the second and third reads?
Well, I don't think we have to do because we've declared the emergency. This doesn't fall into the referendum type passage.
Although the motion to declare an emergency can include suspending the second and third reading. Any other discussion on the ordinance itself? If not, I'll entertain a motion to declare the emergency.
So moved.
Will speak, speak the motion.
I move that we accept section 4 emergency clause as stated in the ordinance.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn made the motion, Jerry seconded it. Any discussion on the emergency clause? I can, I can say, you know, for the record, why we're declaring it an emergency is because we're on a timeline to be ready to take over all the planning commission activities by the end, by really the first week of December. So we don't have 90 days to work on approving this map. So if there's no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote on declaring the emergency.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we've approved the emergency clause. Now I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Make the motion, we adopt ordinance number 2021-010.
Ken made the motion to approve ordinance 2021-010. Do you have a second? Pat seconded it. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. The ordinance passed. Now with any further ado, the sheriff's contract. Like I said, there's really nothing new from the discussion we had in the, in the joint VOC city council workshop. I'm, I'm still talking to Justin about how to best situate ourselves so that we meet the intent of the law relative to having a police department or a sheriff's contract in order that we can set up a district court with Eureka Springs and the county. So he's gonna be sending me some, a draft ordinance of how to do that, that we will take up at the next meeting. So I'll have more on that in the future. But the situation is still basically unchanged. We feel that we have to have a contract with the county to provide police protection in order for us to qualify to be, to be able to set up a district, district court. And the district court is required not just for traffic violations and criminal offenses and things like that, but we need it to also process citations for other code violations. So there's code enforcement and law enforcement, both have to go through the same district court. Okay, discussion on advertising expenditures, Linda?
Uh, yeah. Okay.
I'm at the district court and I talked to the mayor of the district in his waiting room. He was supposed to send me the copy of the ordinance. I called it three times and Marlon called the mayor in the evening. But I did, we talked about, I did call the district court and they have a session on October the 1st at 1:00 and 2:00 p.m.
Yeah, Ken and I thought it'd be a good idea. Maybe we should go over there and see what happens in district court so we know what we're supposed to be fighting for.
I think it might be a good idea to get an idea of, of the parties involved.
Get a ticket.
Yeah.
First hand. And I don't want to do it that way.
Maybe, maybe some of the here have already had the experience in district court.
I've never been there, so.
I do.
But anyway, I will call the mayor and I can see that I was able to find some financial statements today and, and see what their costs are. I don't know what. Butch said that we'd have to use our city attorney as a prosecutor, and I told him we weren't gonna do that.
I think at this point, we need to put together a more complete plan and then bring it to the, to the council. You know, we're still trying to pull a lot of those things together.
Okay.
So discussion on advertising?
Okay. This situation came up in the last month, I would guess. We have a, we have been doing advertising from the district's perspective. They have been running ads, they've been working with High Pro, Holiday Island.
Promoting homeownership.
Promoting residential ownership, Holiday Islanders promoting residential ownership, the High Pro group. And they, they helped us with advertising for the last, quite a few years, actually. And they're, they, they do a great job. And the district has done advertising for, forever that I know, some kind of advertising. I know we started it up again or we started it, started doing more of it in 2012, when I joined the Board of Commissioners. And so we are, we're in the Eureka Springs Visitor Guide. We're in the Northwest Arkansas Tourism Association Visitor Guide. We're in the Arkansas Tourism Visitors Guide, you know, the guide that they produce every year. And these places all have websites too, so being in the hard copy guide also gets you on the website. And the district has been footing the expense for all that advertising. Plus, we're, if you ever pick up the Independent Fund Guide, we've been placing ads in there for, a full page ad for three or four years, anyway. Which, you know, a lot of people, when they visit Eureka, they pick up that fund guide on the street for free and flip through it and they'll see our page on there. So anyway, just to say that, that we have been funding advertising. When the Bischof lawsuit was settled, one of the clauses in that settlement was our ability and entitlement to do advertising from the district per that settlement. They were questioning our legal authority to do advertising, but in the settlement, we all agreed that we could. And so they limited that advertising to 2% of the assessment receipts, assessment revenue. The budgets that HICID produces every year have budgeted an advertising expense for no more than $30,000, knowing that $30,000 would be under that bar of 2% of their assessment revenue. And just for information, HICID, last year, which was a year hampered by the COVID stuff, had budgeted $20,800 in the non-departmental administrative area of the budget. And they only spent $15,536. They also had budgeted $5,000 for golf, just to advertise golf, and only spent $2,500 of it. In 2019, which is a better year for record, they had also budgeted $20,800 in the, in non-departmental, which means advertising general Holiday Island stuff. And they spent $14,827, close to $15,000. For golf, they had budgeted $10,000, but only spent $6,000. So anyway, the city, cities do have the authority to advertise unquestionably. It's, it's written up in state statutes that you can have an advertising and promotion committee. an A and P committee, or a commission. And if, if you call it a commission and operate under the state rules, you, you have to be spending tax money collected through hotel and restaurant hospitality establishments. You have to establish the tax of the city, and, and all that tax money goes to the commission to produce the ads and do the promoting. There's nothing to say you can't do advertising as a city outside of collecting tax money. They don't prohibit that, but if you wanted a committee to oversee it, for instance, you could just call it a advertising committee or an A and P committee and what have you. But you wouldn't be operating under the, the more strict guidelines that the A and P commission officially established and the statutes has to operate with. But the thing that came up recently was we are delinquent in our dues that we usually pay to the Northwest Arkansas Tourism Association. This is.
What do you mean, Hi-Sid or?
Hi-Sid, not, not the city. But Hi-Sid, somehow, in all the COVID stuff and all this, it managed not to pay two years' worth of dues. So we've been getting free advertising from them, nevertheless. We're on their website, we are in the travel guide for last year, we were in the, on the website currently. But we aren't going to be for long if we don't pay the dues.
We're in the middle of the mural on the wall of the airport.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're on the wall at the airport and everything else, so. And that is, that is probably visited by more people who come to Northwest Arkansas than any other place people go to. They have an ad agency that places ads carefully in lots of magazines in the surrounding states. It's actually, they're now using the same agency that Eureka Springs just contracted with. But, you know, they, the agency produces and places ads, targeted ads, in places where visitors are coming from. And, and they, they do Facebook posts, and they do lots of social media things. They produce an e-newsletter quarterly that people can sign up for, and they got a lot of signups on that. And anyway, I, I certainly feel sure that our dues are getting our money's worth on this particular piece of advertising. The dues are twenty-five hundred dollars a year. If you have an A and P commission collecting tax money, you have to pay like five thousand dollars for our size city. Larger cities have to pay ten thousand. So I, I think we're getting a pretty good deal for twenty-five hundred, not having to pay restaurant, not having to collect restaurant or motel tax. So anyway, what we wanted to talk about was would the city want to take on paying for any sort of advertising, any part of this advertising that Hi-Sid is currently doing? And especially would they want to pay for this twenty-five hundred dollars that is currently owed?
They expect anything. Was Hi-Sid the last two years?
No, they, they, they said if we just bring it current.
If we pay this year?
If we pay this year and then pay it again next year about this time of year.
Who's due, who's they?
It's due right now, they, they just invoiced us.
Who's they, Hi-Sid?
The NADA, the Northwest Arkansas.
Hi-Sid has decided they're not gonna do it?
No, they haven't. We're, we're, we are in discussions with them, and maybe they will, maybe they won't, I don't know. But they might want to do it, but we could also do it and help them out, so.
I agree with that. Well, not for they, no, but if they've been doing, they're in a bunch of contracts.
But it's, it, it, they are the only one that's a district doing it. Every other entity, Green Forest, not Green Forest, but Berryville, Huntsville, Siloam Springs, Bentonville, Springdale, Lowell. Did I leave out one, Rogers? These are the, the cities that are in, in the advertising.
Well, I mean, they're, they're dictating what the content is now, right?
Who's dictating?
The district. You mix up what's.
Well, if we took over that contract, we would dictate what went in it, but they are now. And actually, High Pro does most of it.
So if we say no, are they gonna drop it?
I hope not. Maybe we should ask, do we think the city thinks this is a valuable thing for Holiday Island to do?
Well, I, I think it is. I haven't been in the advertising business for a long time. Going through the, getting group rates like that is, couldn't, if we didn't on our own, we couldn't get those group rates. But.
I think.
I'm gonna hold my tongue, but I think it is.
Yeah, the district, the district has been doing it for several years by default, because they were the only, the only organization that had the resources to do anything like that.
I think we've been doing it since about twenty fourteen or fifteen.
Whenever the developers stopped promoting Holiday Island, you know, the only thing, the only organization left that had the resources to pick up the ball was Hi-Sid. And arguably, it's more of a city function than it is a suburban improvement district function.
Whoever pays the bill also is a participant in their bi-monthly meetings, so.
My, uh, my concern with taking it on is that we would be taking on an expense with no source of, with no new source of revenue to cover it. We, we have a very limited budget as it is, and we have a lot of things that we absolutely positively have to spend money on, like code enforcement. I sent you all pictures of some of our finer properties that need to be dealt with.
I, I, I think they oughta, I think they oughta pay it this year. I mean, they're paying for this year, which they should have paid months ago, and they didn't get, and they could consider it next year. That's, that's where I'm leaning, that we budget forward next year to take it over.
I know High Pro does a lot, and they do it all out of their own pocket. And, you know, so that's another consideration. Are, as a city, are we going to be depending, are we gonna, you know, stake our future growth on volunteers doing things out of their own pocket? Or do we see that as a responsibility?
I, I should also mention that, that for the last several years, Hi-Sid has paid for an additional full page ad in their, in that guidebook and on the website to promote Holiday Island more in depth. So, and that costs about twenty-five hundred more.
I would like to see us put it off, you know, figure one, two, three. Look, I think we need to look into this B and B thing and see if there's something that we can. We have definitely been in a better financial condition to take it on. I mean, I mean, it, at some point, at some point in time, some, somewhere, either Hi-Sid or us, they're gonna have to regulate. And if we, you know, going to the regulation and licensing and everything, you know, there's a tax to be collected.
Well, licensing is not a tax. It's separate from a tax, so you could do a license without a tax, I'm just saying.
Well, I know, but if we're gonna do a license, we're gonna tax them, okay?
Well, you don't have to, I'm just saying.
Well, we will.
Well.
I mean, that's, that's where you get your advertising.
Your, your one vote, Ken.
I'm gonna hear, it's a problem, and every city is going into that.
What we need, what we need is a plan.
Right.
You know, what are we gonna spend our, what, what are, what are we going to do for advertising? And where's the revenue gonna come from to cover the expense? So at this point, you know, I don't think we're in a position to make any commitment for this year, because our budget was set last, you know, January, and, and advertising wasn't, I don't believe there was a line in it, or whatever.
I don't think so.
Next year's coming up, so.
True.
Yeah, but by, by October, by November, when we should be approving our budget, or December, we, we should be able to have a plan, working with the district and with High Pro. You, you know, you had a nice comprehensive list, but I would still like to see something in kind of a plan format that says, you know, we spent this money on this, the target, or the expectation, the expected results of that investment is this, you know, this is who we're targeting, and, you know, go down the list, and then, you know, we could, we could probably say that this, you know, clearly benefits the district, because it's strictly promoting golf, or it's strictly promoting a marina, or something like that. Maybe those the district needs to continue to pay for.
Well, the district does get assessments, hopefully, by new people moving here too, so. And in that way, it also benefits the district. But we won't get any new taxpayers, because we don't have any tax.
So anyway.
Might get, might get Airbnb if we were to tax Airbnb, we could, we could get more Airbnb customers.
This is where we need to look at, because if the statute says that, you know, the funds from that have to go into advertising.
I would hope that we could collect more than twenty-five hundred or five thousand.
Oh, yeah.
For our ads.
And I, I, I.
Then. But with our small area to collect taxes from, it's kind of nebulous.
How many of those were at the last, every joint meeting we had, and they said there were, Dale Ellison said there were sixty-eight, Lynn says there's two hundred, I don't know, but nobody knows.
And I don't want to make any assumptions about how many of those will still be in existence once.
We crack down.
Resolving ordinances are replaced, because you can't operate a business in a, you know, you can't operate a C-one business in our one residential area.
Or a C-two, or a C-three, whatever C we call it.
Yeah. So that's, that's something we have to tackle. We don't want to stifle.
Good question.
Tourism, vacation rentals has been a part of the economy of Holiday Island.
Yeah, if you.
For thirty years.
If you take all those Airbnbs out.
So we are.
If you say you can't have an Airbnb in any residential area, and all of them are in residential areas, you are gonna cut off tourism in Holiday Island, for sure.
We're going to a much different subject here.
Anyway, I would support taking that on.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we can talk to Danny.
Yeah.
About it.
I mean, we could call a work session and invite Vernon Anderson with High Pro and decisions.
That would be a good idea. Then we could lay out all of the, you know, like, this is the magazine this money goes into, and this is what this goes into. We can lay it all out on a table and everybody can see. And one of the things that I don't like about spending money on advertising is because it's so difficult to get direct feedback as to what the payback is.
Well, one thing, High Pro, and I may have this number a little bit elevated, but they get several hundred responses to some posts, websites, and they respond to all of the packet of materials. So it is valuable to what they're doing.
My, my guess is, is that long term, we do, we do want an advertising and promotion commission, and we, it's, it's part of economic development, and, but it's gotta be thought through as far as, you know, what they're gonna do and where the funding is gonna come from.
I know that this Northwest Arkansas Tourism Group and the advertising agency that works for them does produce a report at every meeting that shows how many hits they get on the website and the social media and all this kind of stuff, and it's very impressive to see that kind of data come through. And because, you know, every time they hit the website, there is a likelihood they might see the name Holiday Island and read something about us. Now, there's no guarantee, but if you have an ad out there, you know, you can usually count clicks on that, too.
Okay. Well, we'll, as far as the council is concerned, I think we're tabling this until we.
Budget.
Bring it up. When we get into the budget process, we'll try to have some sort of a plan, more information on a plan. In the meantime, are you gonna get back with Danny and?
Yeah.
And see if they're at least going to renew that membership?
I will.
Okay. Revising resolution, well, actually, it's Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh twenty-four, which is modifying our posting procedures. Do I have a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-one oh twenty-four on the floor for consideration?
So move.
Lynn moved, put the motion on the floor, and.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the reading except for the amended change.
Wait, I only heard one aye. And no, it was Ken. Did everybody aye? Okay. I guess Ken just dropped out of everybody else.
I make a motion that we suspend the reading of the entire ordinance and policy and only the change that's made in section three.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Who seconded the, wait, the reading?
Jerry.
From Jerry.
Lynn, do you want to go ahead and handle the change?
Sure. It appears by the reading of this Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, the only revision occurs in section three entitled Approved Locations for Posting Notifications. And bullet number four is stated, the bulletin board inside the Hi-Sid office boardroom, excuse me, I think we're wrong. It's bullet number three that changed, I'm sorry. Bullet three changes. Number three says, the bulletin board inside the city office at one-ten Woodsdale Drive, Suite one oh three. It's my understanding that number three used to read, inside the rec center. But because of the conditions of the rec center building and the closing of that building and no available space where they moved to in the island room, this ordinance, or excuse me, this resolution and policy is being changed.
Right. And this is, I'm sure that at some point in the future, will be changed again, because this isn't the best location for the fifth board. However, we're required to post in five public places in order for our ordinances to be valid. So that's where we're gonna put it up until we maybe until the rec center gets put back together, or maybe we can find a place in the island for. And for the record, this resolution replaces Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eighteen, which established the original five locations for posting and method for posting.
And, and I would like to say maybe Wes needs to, when you update the table of contents, make that note on the two resolutions.
And to be clear, also, the policy that's attached to this in section two, locations and durations. And to be clear, also, the policy that's attached to this in Section Two, Locations and durations, Bullet Number Three, the bulletin board outside entrance to Baldwin, that's the wrong one. Number Four is correct there, the bulletin board inside the city office, I'm getting
They're not in the same order.
They're not in the same order.
In the policy and in the
Okay.
revolution.
That's why, sorry, anyway. So, it lists the city office, it's a new location.
So, this is, uh, this is kind of a harmless little change to post some procedures. Any, any discussion on the resolution? And all entertain a motion to, to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash oh twenty-four? Make a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-One dash. Ken made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Lynn's seconded it, uh, Wes, you wanna, we'll call a vote.
Okay, Councilmember Dumis?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Finnman? On favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. All righty, moving on. Uh, just for discussion, uh, and this is totally up to the council, do we want to join the Chamber of Commerce? From an economic development perspective, um, basically, any city that's successful has a successful Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, any city I've ever gone party to, the city and the Chamber of Commerce have worked closely together on economic development and promoting the community and things like that. So, I'm opening the floor to discussion.
I, I, I think that it's a move that we have to make. I think that we want the Chamber to be a multifunctional entity and, and support and work with us, I think we need to join, join it and be, and have a member that sits in on the meeting, and I think that would probably be best for our economic development.
I agree, how much does it cost?
A hundred dollars.
Well, it's sometimes for an individual member to work.
It'd be a hundred dollars for us, for a voting member.
Okay.
And I think, I think we need a voter on that council.
So, does somebody wanna make a motion to have the city join the Chamber of Commerce?
I'd make a motion to join.
And elect Jerry as our representative?
Oh, it's gonna be a double vote.
I'm not sure Jerry wants to, uh.
No, a, actually, I do, I, I think it's very important that, that we have at least an ear in those meetings and the public voice.
It's, uh, appointing Jerry doesn't have to be part of the motion. The motion should be that the mayor appoints someone to attend the, uh, council meetings, or the, uh, chamber meetings.
Chamber meetings.
So, Pat made the motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Ken seconded it, any further discussion?
Shall we put that under an expense called advertising?
There's, there's a li, there's a line item for dues and, uh,
For dues.
Or, dues, fees, and, okay, all right, we have a speak.
Okay, uh, any other discussion?
Yes. Phil did it. Is there any requirements for the Chamber finances to be public?
I do not know the answer to that.
It's the only reason why we need to get involved.
Private industry.
I, I consider, I've been a member of the Chamber for five years through the Alps. They're pretty deep. They pass out, you know, they pass out a financial sheet and expense sheet, but as far as in-depth of what the things are paid to. I mean, but for a hundred dollars, you know.
The only way to influence it is to be part of it, so.
Could I, uh, if Jerry's gonna be attending, can I, can we send two people, catch him? Can I go as, because I'm working with Barbara Talbot on something for Christmas. That's kind of a public meeting, I think. Yeah, maybe you can all go if you want.
Anyone can join for twenty-five dollars.
Well, at one vote, you know, as far as the voting members, uh.
You're gonna turn, it's, it has to be a public meeting, so. I mean, if, if it's a hundred dollars for a voting member, I mean, you must spend, you know, another hundred and twenty-five and get, get Five votes? No, no, just, no, just get one, one voting member, and then the rest associate members on it, but.
Well, I mean, you can bring a guest to any chamber, man.
You don't need to do that, all you need to do is let it come with you.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, I don't think we need to roll call vote, nothing. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Lynn, you wanna contact Barbara?
Okay.
Okay, purchase of office
For a regular membership, too.
That's, yeah.
Voting members.
Purchase of office furniture. This is, uh, totally my idea, so you can thumbs up or thumbs down. But, uh, when we, when we got into the rental agreement, uh, we planned on buying a lot of stuff, you know, desks and chairs and stuff like that, all we, other than computer hardware and, and, you know, internet's, you know, wiring and stuff like that. The only thing we really bought was two chairs. So, um, I, um, I, I'm, I'm not concerned that we're gonna come into the office someday and the, all, all the furniture will be moved out because the district still feels they own, own it and they had a use for it, so, you know, they would never do that to us without a little advance warning. But, if, uh, you know, just on the outside chance that they need furniture and, uh, and, and feel like they still own the furniture that's there, I would rather that the city own it, and then there's no, uh, question. And I put together this kind of offer letter that everybody's got a copy of, or you showed that anyway.
Yeah.
It's nine hundred and sixty dollars total for, uh, two desks, a credenza, the big cuff conference table, and ten chairs, one of which needs new wheels, um, a file cabinet, um, and three metal bookcases. Um, I came up with these prices, I use, I've spent a career selling used equipment, so I just looked up what something would cost new, and I said, if it's in good shape, it's worth thirty percent of what it would be new, and, uh, that's kind of where.
I mean, replace that conference table alone would be well over that, uh, that's decent.
So, um, so if somebody wants to make a motion that we, uh, pay the district nine hundred and sixty dollars for this list of the equipment, then the city will have assets.
Assets.
I'll move that we purchase the furniture.
Lynn, say the motion that we purchase the furniture, second?
I second.
Lynn, you seconds, any further discussion?
My only concern is the lights, lighting, anyway, I'll do. Because in, there, there's no windows by my desk, the desk is in the corner. There's three, uh, lights, there's weak lights.
There's three floor lamps, pedestal lamps in there, that I did not include in the deal. I can pencil that in and, yeah.
Thank you.
Please.
Thousand.
Now, the lights aren't worth that much, and
No.
they're not worth anything at the price yet, so, I don't view them.
Add to the list with no value.
Yeah.
That way alone.
Right, okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Wes, I'm gonna sign this.
Okay. So, does Danny, Danny need to sign it?
He's, he's already signed it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
About to initial your revision and date it.
Bring him a check and then have him initial that, and then you can run a copy of it. So, I don't know that he needs a copy of it. Okay, uh, reviewing the priority list, and follows. This is the list that I've been using to try to keep myself on, on track. Uh, the things in RED are, you know, we're behind schedule on, but I don't feel bad about it. Appointing members to the Economic Development Task Force. We have enough forces in the race right now that I've kinda put the Economic Development Task Force on the back burner until we have the planning commission up and running, about the, the maps and everything done, and some ordinances passed, and get a building inspector and a code enforcement officer, um, identified, that has to take priority, which was on the August agenda, I put it in RED to define the position for code enforcement officer and building inspector. I have drafted position descriptions for those two positions. I've, uh, I'm running them by, um, I asked Miki Finefield to look at them, uh, to give me his opinion, um, and, uh, along with the building codes, to, just to get his, uh, input, because they've been doing this or trying to do this for the last several years, and he may know of something I've overwritten. So, as soon as I, um, as soon as I'm ready to run it by everybody, I'll, uh, I'll get you guys a copy. Design building permit forms, I haven't even thought about that yet, but we'll probably just get whatever inventory or planning commission has left of their pre-printed, uh, documents, unless they have an electronic one, of which we'll get a copy of that. And then modify it to reflect the city. Um, workshop on health and sanitation ordinance. I said postpone until we have zoning ordinances in place. But, that's basically what I've been working on for the last two, four, or five days. Because I, I'm getting more and more calls from people that have, um, problematic neighbors, uh, and I mean, really problematic as far as junk in the yards, I mean, I, I drove past two of them just this, uh, last weekend that truly looked like a dump. There's everything you can imagine laying around the yard. And, uh, we need to get the health and sanitation ordinance passed, and get a code enforcement officer on board, so that we can start, um, citing some of these people and getting it cleaned up, it, it's really getting bad.
Are, are people living in those houses, you sent us the pictures, they were pretty bad, I mean, really bad.
I haven't even played about that one yet. There's one on the end of Cypress Creek, where it's, we just pile in bags of garbage, you can't see it from the road because the driveway is just, I mean, the whole front of the yard is going over with trees and stuff, which is a good thing, from the standpoint that you can't see it from the road. But if you look down the driveway, it's just piles of garbage bags. Maybe they're just full of leaves and not garbage, I don't know.
Are we aware if there's children involved?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Are they renters, do you know?
One for sure is up on Dogwood up here, because the person that called me, uh, is, has the rental duplex right next to it, and her, her renters, who are good people, are getting real nervous about property that's going. And at this point, it, the, the one up on Dogwood up here has been going on for twelve to eighteen months already, because this is the second time that, I was still on the board of commissioners, or, yeah, the board of commissioners for the district, the first time that came up, with Lawrence and I drove up there and looked at it, uh.
Has Aaron looked at these properties? Is there anything Aaron can do, has he looked at the properties, or?
I don't think there's much Aaron can do unless there's a child safety issue or something like that, or drugs. Uh, they're not doing anything technically illegal. They're violating the covenants, but that's not technically breaking the law. And, uh, until we have an ordinance in place, then they'll be breaking the law. So, I'm putting a real priority on that, I, I, I wanna get that in place here in the next, uh, couple months for sure. And then the things on the, in September, we're still working on the sheriff's contract. We're still working on the district court, but we won't get that done, but we are working on it. Work session on the Twenty Twenty-Two budget, it's on the agenda to schedule that, although Wes wants to, uh, propose in a different date. Preliminary road plans, I haven't done anything with the district, um, road plans for next year other than the, uh, the big, uh, grant project, but we need to have a, uh, written agreement between us and the district for next year. First reading of, uh, the building code ordinance, didn't quite make that in September, but we'll have it for October. File planning area and master street plans, getting close.
The research I did says that, um, the, the, the proper person has to present to the recorder. So, I'm guessing it'll either have to be the mayor or recorder to go with me, or we'll have to do it. I don't think I can do it as a representative of the city, because I'm not a signature.
I would imagine it's probably, yes.
Wes and I will find a date to get down.
Wes is the official record keeper for us.
Okay.
Can we file them one at a time, or do we have to file?
We have to file this first.
First.
We have to get this first. Once it's filed, then you can do the other things, sooner than later.
Okay, uh, the broadband we talked about, the awards we talked about, so, we're in too bad a shape as far as following the priority list.
Oh, I'd like to add to that bullet. Uh, we need to have an ordinance that directs the election commission on how, uh, council members are elected. We have to decide if we're gonna do it by board, or we're gonna do it partially by, at large, or all at large. We have to choose the option.
That's right.
We need an ordinance to, to tell them how to do it.
I think there's also something in there. We discussed two years, four years, yeah.
We've discussed it, but we need an ordinance to dir, direct them how it's done. And that's done after the awards are established, and they're not established yet.
I added it as a bullet for, um, a filter.
Okay.
Because we can be working on the draft of the ordinance
Yes.
patient of the first reading.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we got a lot to do yet before the end of the year. If anybody has anything else they wanna add to it, that you're willing to do.
There's something else that, you know, that comes along, handled by the, uh, ordinance on, uh, the, calling it, bill, you know, enforcement codes, and property codes, is the, uh, trash collection.
Yeah.
Not a big deal.
I think we've probably got too much to do.
There's, in, in the, in the section on health and sanitation, one, if you look at the municipal codes, pile of waste and garbage is one of the, one of the se, sections entitled by it. And, um, if, if you look at, uh, like, Berryville and Green Forest, um, they, that's where they put their, the whole thing about establishing Carroll County's pile of waste in the district. And, uh, so, um, we're not one of the founding cities of that district, so I'm not gonna just cut and paste that whole thing, but, um, that's, you know, for, for our first pass on this, uh, admitting health and sanitation ordinance is passed, I think I'm gonna leave that section blank, and just say reserved for future, uh, pile of waste. Because blank and just say reserved for future solid waste, because I, I think we need to, it's another one of those things where we, we have to have some basis for making a decision. We could, we have the authority to just, or you guys have the authority, to just say we're going to go with Carroll County, but if we're really interested in hearing what the public has to say, and, and there's four other businesses working here in Holiday Island, we probably do need to see what their capabilities are. We probably need to generate a document of what are we looking for in a trash collection.
I think we probably just don't have time to do it this year. It's a, it's a priority.
It's, it's definitely on the to-do list. Okay, anything else on the priority?
Did you, did you have a bullet in, between now and the end of the year for doing the health and sanitation ordinances that you said you wanted to get going?
Yeah. Yeah, I had, I had, as a bullet item, I had a workshop on health and sanitation ordinance. I'm not sure we're going to do the workshop, but I think we're just going to, we're just going to adopt an ordinance. I've been doing all the research, I've read more health and sanitation muni codes than I ever thought I'd have to. All right, I'll, I'll add that as a bullet to the thousand ordinance.
You said you wanted to get done the next couple of months, so I wrote end of November.
Okay.
Okay.
Public comments?
Oh, before we go to public comments, I did include Wes's financial statements for the month of August. Wasn't it August? This is September. I didn't know if you wanted, did we decide we had to approve them, or just acknowledge them or something?
Just acknowledge them, and then quite frankly, I forgot to put it on the.
And it wasn't on the agenda, and I forgot to mention it early on, too.
I think the term's accept.
But if, or accept them, or whatever, I, I will post them after the meeting.
Okay. And, well, initially, I think the first of the month, I had distributed on my old Excel spreadsheet formula, and then when I got the new accounting software, I distributed them using the new software.
You know, I think I had one question, though, about them, if I could mention that.
Not on the agenda.
I know it's not on the agenda.
Wait for future comments.
Are you doing this under commission or something?
I think prior, prior to this new statement format, didn't you have a cash ledger statement?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that, that that's all reflected in here, really.
I, there's a report to do that. I figured you already had it.
We don't have it for August, though. Not that I know. We do? Okay.
Should have been in the, in the old format.
I don't think it was attached to the same email.
There was two separate emails.
There were? Okay.
You, you had, the first one came out with this Excel spreadsheet.
I could have missed it. I'll go back and look. Don't worry about it.
I can't tell you which was, what was in one, but what was the other.
What's that?
I said, I can't, she's mentioned one was in something, one in one, and then I, that I don't remember, but there were two different ones.
If you want to talk about that. G I, well, everybody got the email, I guess for the general public, I can make a, a report on that. The Treasury, Arkansas Treasury, asked G I S to do a new population estimate for an official new population estimate for Holiday Island based on the 2020 census, which they did, and they sent us a copy of the letter that they sent back to Treasury, very detailed, indicating that the official, their official population estimate for Holiday Island is 2,399 people, which is a 6.1 or 2% increase over the previous estimate of 2,260. And, and they have the maps in there of how they do the estimate and everything else, so it's pretty accurate, I think.
So will that be the new population we use going forward for getting money and everything else?
At some point, the Treasury will start using 2020 census numbers for distributing turnback money, and whatever money we get from the state.
Probably will not be to our advantage, because a lot of the other cities and.
Well, that's what we don't know. That's what we don't know, is that, you know, if all the cities grew by 6% annual, then our revenue will stay the same. It's just that the same pie will cut, get cut up in a lot smaller pieces, and you'll still get the same number of pieces you always got.
There were a lot of them that were complaining that they were reduced.
Yeah, yes, a lot of them.
And they, they didn't say it wasn't true.
Yeah, but, but every one of them, every one of them that was complaining was a small town in rural county, and in fact, the numbers probably were true, and they just don't want to admit it, because most of them.
They, they said they had more water meters than they had population.
Cool.
Really? I mean, that was some of the comments, that was, if you read the comments on muni league.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there could be a lot of water meters hooked up to empty ovens.
Doubt it.
I, I don't know. I, I don't, I don't imagine that the Treasury will start using those new numbers mid-year. I'm guessing they'll start with that in January, so we'll, we'll know it somewhere.
I think overall, the Arkansas population's increased around 3%. As I recall, I looked at that. So if we're up six, that should affect, for instance, the sales sector, certainly.
Well, hopefully it'll be positive, but that is not going to be significant.
I, I really don't anticipate it being negative, but it may not be positive.
I don't think it's going to be really significant. I think it's not. I think we will see a great growth.
That puts us 101 people away from a first-class city. That's worrisome.
In 10, in 10 years to worry about it.
Well, so they won't do intermediate ones?
It says they may do another one in 2023, special census program in 2023.
Well, they were supposed to do that in 2020, yeah.
From what I've seen, that does not mean that we, if we go over 2,500, that we have to be a first-class city.
Yeah, I have to do some more research on that. I've, I've never seen anything to say that we can petition to stay a second-class city, but I know that, like, Eureka Springs doesn't have the population to be a city of first-class, but they petition.
Probably should be.
To become, to become one, because it gives them a lot more taxing authority, but I, I'm not worried about it. I, you know, the law says that, that the, that the distribution is based on the population established in the dicennial census, not in any interim census that they might choose to do, so. But that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean that Fayetteville or some place that's blossoming in growth might not push to have new numbers.
Where, where, where did that came from, the state trade department?
Came from the Department of Transportation and Shared Services, where it came from. The Arkansas Department of Transportation and, or Shared Services.
Really?
Because if you call up the.
Which is what G I S is part of, right?
Yeah, that's the subtitle at the bottom, Arkansas Geographical Information Systems, yes. Did you call up what, Jerry?
Well, the, I sent down a thing, they sent an updated table of 2020 census, and, you know, where the census population district or whatever, and that, but this number is significantly larger, not significantly, but it shows 2,353 of that expanded area. And that was.
Which is the 2010 census number. 2,353 is what, what it was in, in 2010.
Okay, then the new one's 2,373, not 2,353.
2,373 was the 2010, 2,353 would be the different, the new one.
Well, to call it Sandy Martin Rico, the census was off three months.
It's been hanging, it's a little time ago already.
Well, that's, you know, according to the state, that's what our official population is right now. I guess subject to change if something happens. Any public comments?
I'd like to thank you all for all the time and effort you volunteer into this city council, and I hope that Judge Bar, Judge Bar, soon realizes his civic duty to give us the money we deserve.
How much is that money?
I just, like, carry out an AP.
A year or a year?
A year. I, I just really ticked, because they, they sent that out, admitting that they agreed to it, and then, but I don't want to see them get away with it.
We're working on it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a.
Thank you for your comments.
You are. Commissioner, council comments?
Sure.
I had a note, and remind me, do we have, now that we have assets and computer equipment and what have you in our office, do we have renters insurance to cover that property in case the building burns, or the doors are open at night?
Or is next regular lives is a city office thing?
Yes, sir. Do we have renters insurance covering our assets?
I just, I don't think we have.
We don't have renters insurance.
We need an interim marine policy to cover it.
Okay. Okay. Interim marine?
Inland marine.
Inland marine.
Well, I'm going to get a quote.
Well, the assets aren't very much, but.
Are you sure we don't have that covered with the useful? I don't think so.
I don't have to be.
I'll call, I'll call them if you want. I don't think so. I'm sure, because it's, it's a matter of, they could, they could furnish it, but it's really not very much. I don't know, it's like 40 hours a year, based on so much of a thousand, it's not very much. I can, I'll find out.
Yes, I know. We also need to pass an ordinance establishing what our policy is for capitalization. Are we going to capitalize anything, everything over $1,000, everything over $5,000, everything, anything with a 10-year useful life, or how we're going to do it?
Can?
We'll, we'll let our pressure make a recommendation on that.
Don't forget all the computer equipment, either.
Yes.
Well, you know, Mike.
I think it's.
Sunday and I are going to ask the data. Right now, probably, I think we only have three things more than $1,000, that would be two laptops and the marquee, which we don't do.
You don't have to capitalize it, depreciate it.
You don't have to depreciate it, that's the main thing. We do need to have a list of everything we own, so that it doesn't just disappear, and nobody knows what happened to it, but.
Well, you're responsible for it.
But we don't want a lot of, yeah, because I'm responsible for it. But we don't want, we don't want to make a common exercise out of depreciating something, and there's no benefit.
Right.
There's depreciation, and then it's just a statistical cost.
Well, and from that, you might go, if you have depreciation on capital assets, that might go into the audit request, not too, I don't know. That would be new, since I did commence a lot of it, because back then, they were only cash receipts, and you cashed it. Now, under governmental accounting, you have to go for depreciation.
It's, I guess it's a way of expressing the useful life of your assets, whether you're replacing them as fast as you're using them, but.
Right.
That depreciation was just a tax advantage. One other thing, Justin mentioned, Justin asked me if we passed our ordinance yet to establish, establishing our tax mileage for next year, because we have to pass an ordinance establishing that, and then notify the county.
So do you pass one that says zero, or?
I said, we don't intend to have a property tax, and he said, hmm, he's never heard of that.
That's what I read, if we don't do it, it's zero.
Well, and he's, he said, he suggested that we pass an ordinance anyway, with the mileage set at zero.
Okay.
And, and he's going to draft an ordinance for me, because he does that for all his other client cities, and that way, it'll get us in the practice of doing it every year in case we do want to, maybe have a later someday. All right, any other council member comments? Okay, next regular meeting is Thursday, Tuesday, April.
19.
December 18.
19.
Okay, budget workshop. I, I looked, I was looking at 10:05, because I figured I'd have everything I needed by then, but Wes is going to be gone at that time, and he really needs to be here for the budget workshop.
And I'd like to be gone. And I'd like to be gone, I'm planning on, I need to be gone on the 7th for sure, I still have, I'm leaving.
You have an alternate date?
I'll be gone on 7, Tuesday.
We, I mean, we, we have plenty of time, we can do it late October.
We'll be, we'll be back to the 11th. I mean, we'll be driving.
Somebody want to pick a date, and, and then everybody can go home and check their calendars? How about check with their wife?
Second, Tuesday or something like that.
Well, that, second Tuesday is our planning commission meeting.
Yes, always is. But then we can't do a Tuesday, because fourth Tuesday, we need to have it before the spring meeting.
Well, we don't have to approve the budget until, actually, we don't have to approve the budget until January, but.
You have to submit one.
I have to submit one, yeah.
Yeah, well, if, if we don't approve a budget until January, we can't spend any money until after we approve the budget, so that would be the end of January.
We'll approve the budget in December, which means we got all of October and all of November to fund it, so there's really no rush.
I don't, I don't.
Well, it's going to.
That Wes come up with the date. It must be, he has to believe it.
Maybe, I would say, well, the 12th or later, and that 12th wouldn't give you much time.
He's not planning.
I know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't give me much time after we get back. And do you want to do it on a Tuesday, or is some other date okay?
Other day is okay. Neither of those are going to work. We'll regolf him in the morning or whatever. Well, that will be what I'll think. That's why we got the cover from the public.
What about Monday afternoon, the 18th?
Usually Mondays are playing on us, they're pretty much open. Mondays and Thursdays, we normally don't have much going on, although on Thursdays, a lot of times, we'll schedule, we'll schedule appointments.
What was that? What was that date, Mr.?
Monday, the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, too, that would be fine.
Board of Commissioners is in the morning, that morning in this room, but if we did it in the afternoon, we'd be okay.
You mean October, ended it?
Wanna do it later in the day in case they have a long meeting, cause they'll be in the budget process too.
Two or three?
Three o'clock, three o'clock?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock coming into.
Okay.
Okay. Any announcements? Motion to adjourn?
Take a motion, we adjourn.
We have a second.
Come on, you guys.
Ken made the motion and Jerry seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose?
Bill said he, he opposed.
Okay.